Next item. Okay, consideration of rejecting the construction bid Fresno County Community Development Block Grant CBG, Ringo Park Restroom Replacement Project, six, uh, number sixteen, six, five, one. Isaac? Oh, no, Kirchner, I'm sorry. Mike, this is your thing.
Oh, no, no, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I jumped ahead of myself. Okay.
Um, actually, I wanted to do this to, uh...
Okay, Dan, you're up on this again. Okay?
There you go.
Okay. So, the history on this project, um, Ringo Park Restroom, when we originally proposed on this project to the county, uh, the thought process was to actually go through and rehabilitate the existing restroom. And when we assessed the structure itself, um, it turned out that there, it was in such disrepair that didn't make sense to rebuild that. And so, we changed, uh, changed modes and decided that we would put a prefabricated structure, much like the one that we just did at Lincoln Park. And unfortunately, the environmental on that took the county upwards of a year, uh, to reestablish going from a repair to a replacement. I can't explain it, but it's what happened. Um, so, we finally got to bid the project, and we were sitting on a budget of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from CDBG. Again, this is because we have moved monies around and borrowed ahead, and that was what we had left for us a single year, uh, for that project. And, uh, we thought it was gonna do, but we got one bid and it came in at, I think, two-hundred-and-five thousand. And in reviewing the bids, uh, or the bid, it was clear that they, uh, the contractor threw it together. They had unit costs that were so outrageous, I couldn't even believe it. I mean, normally, I would see sidewalk, you know, concrete flower cost at, you know, six dollars a square foot. They were at forty. So, it was, it was pretty clear that, that, uh, you know, we had a single bidder that didn't put a lot of time in their bid and, you know, maybe didn't care. I don't know. But, uh, at any rate, I've spoke with Michael Kirchner and Isaac Moreno, and we were able to find some additional monies, uh, from one of the parks funds to add an additional thirty thousand to the project, so it gives us a budget of one-fifty-five. And we have a little bit of, uh, extra CDBG that wasn't used in the last process, total another nine. So, we've got about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to build this restroom. I have since gone back to the contractor and talked with him, and, uh, they acknowledged that they didn't even consult with their subs and they threw these numbers together. So, um, we've worked through and figured that this job is very doable within the budget that we've got, based on a normal bidding environment. And so, we would like to rebid this project, um, immediately. And, uh, so that's what we're here for, number one, to reject, well, basically, yeah, just to reject this other project so that we can move forward with bidding it again. And, uh, we anticipate good results this time.
Puma gonna be the only bidder in this next bid?
It's very possible.
Do they do better work than they do bidding?
I, I know that they do these restrooms. Um, they just finished one in Fresno here very recently.
Dan, let me ask a question. The, the ones that did Lincoln Park, they're not the same ones, are they?
I don't believe so. Who's the contractor on that, Michael? Well, it'll, it'll be the same restroom supplier, respecting the same, uh, type of restroom. But, uh, I, I think he's referring more to a general contractor. Do we have a GC or did, did that outfit? Oh, they contacted, all direct.
Mike, on that question right there, Mike, what was the cost on that one? I forgot. Well, I couldn't remember the cost on that one, on the, on the Lincoln Park restroom on that one. And that?
Lincoln Park Restrooms was about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. But you also have twelve thousand in the cement and labor, and then about seven hundred dollars to the fencing around the, uh, trash bins.
So?
And PG&E was fourteen hundred, and Mark Al's electric work, I think, I haven't got the bill yet.
So, total cost was?
Uh, you're probably about one-eighty to one-ninety. But that's what's more work and what's gonna be required at Ringo, because, um, at Lincoln, we had to do water and sewer and electricity. With, um, Ringo Park, it's going to be just like Bremlinger where it's just gonna go right into the existing plumbing and electricity.
You also had to do, um, fencing. You also had to do some sidewalking around it and things of that nature, connectivity for the pathways. So, there were some added, uh, costs to that project compared to what we're currently doing.
I, I believe Lincoln Park two is a larger restroom.
Tear down, right? Tear down. Could we complete tear down?
It's tear down in. They're gonna pull the whole new one down. Okay.
But step one is just to reject all bids for construction and start over again.
What we're doing here tonight is reject the current bid and allowing us to put it back out to bids. We can finish the process.
Yeah.
So, our bulk of the money is from our CDBG grant money?
Approximately a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars is CDBG.
This is the consistent two-hundred and ten thousand dollars we talked about in previous conversation?
It, it's what's remaining. Again, because the, the long story is, we borrowed ahead, uh, in the process of purchasing the Valley View land and building the improvements, uh, associated with that basin. And so, in it, flopping money around and borrowing ahead and various things, the result was, we had that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that program here. That was because we had borrowed ninety thousand or so of it ahead for our prior year's project.
Okay, I have a motion on the table.
Okay. Roll call. Well, you don't show it to the public. Anybody to make a public comment on this issue before we? Nope. Okay, referred back to council. Okay, made a motion made by Mike and, uh, seconded by Franco. Roll call?
Thank you, Dan.
No, by Councilmember Monty Hope, right?
Yes.
Roll call. Councilmember Dirk?
Aye.
Councilmember Montyu?
Aye.
Councilmember Franco?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Aye.
Mayor Avolus?
Aye. It goes without the bit. Okay, next item. Number five, discussion of direction regarding the Amishes Project Adjacent Rockwell Pond for development for public park. Mike, you're up.
Mayor Avolus, members of the City Council, I was, uh, asked to provide an update to, uh, the work that we've been conducting for the last few years on the proposed park near Rockwell Pond. Um, in early two thousand fifteen, we were directed to begin inquiry on purchasing a land adjacent to the Rockwell Pond, uh, that was owned by the County of Fresno. We also, just about that time, took ownership of the Rockwell Pond from CID. Uh, a meeting was set up with Fresno County staff to seek and obtain information on the possibility of the county, uh, agreeing to sell the property uh, they had purchased through a tobacco initiative. Uh, City Council did approve the city manager's recommendation at the time, and so, we set up a meeting here with county staff, um, to get input and then move forward on. Uh, City Manager Ken Graham, myself, made a presentation to the County of Fresno. Uh, the Board of Supervisors have a review committee in which two members of the Board of Supervisors sit on. It's kinda similar to how our Recreation Commission might work, where you get an advisory, um, council to give you input, and then, then you move forward to the Board of Supervisors. Uh, the review committee approved unanimously to consider recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for property being negotiated to sell to the City of Selma. We then began to negotiate with staff. Again, as previously mentioned, uh, about three city managers later, it kinda delayed the process because we had a city manager. Then, a new city manager, so I had to set up another meeting to try to keep city manager up to speed of, of what has been occurring. So, um, with Henry Preia as our interim, and now Isaac, we're, we're on the, we were on the fast track. The, um, Board of Supervisors and the City of Selma obviously agreed to, the park was important in negotiations. Originally, staff was looking at, um, six to seven acres based on our funds available through the city, and this is about three or four and a half years ago. When a grant opportunity came along that was not projected to the state of California, and we applied for grant, and we were here before you, that was some grants left over from property for the cities that did not expend the funds, and so, they opened up this grant. So, we then applied for twelve acres for a grant, because, um, if the grant's gonna pay for it, we might as well get more acres, because we do need a larger park. Uh, unfortunately, we were, did not receive those grant funds. And so, from this point forward, we, we revised, uh, the, the location of the previous location of the park was gonna be up closer. I'm gonna do a map in a few minutes, too, uh, closer to DeWolfe, when you come off of, make a ride from Florida, make a ride on DeWolfe, and just pass the pond, and that would be the park. And so, staff was directed, we were going to move the park slightly east closer to the highway. And it's been discussed where, uh, installation of a water feature, kind of a, a bridge from the development. And then, walking trails and biking trails are on the top of the ponding basin. And so, we would create a nice little park and create some nice little amenities as you're driving north from Fresno into Selma. You'd see a park on your right, uh, the water feature, and then all the development there. Based on the grant requirements and the desire the city to receive from the feedback, community forms were required as part of these grants. On May twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, and September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, forms were held to gain input from residents on the needs. And, uh, those were attached to your staff reports, so you kinda gotta feel what the residents wanted. Many of them kinda changed order. Obviously, open space was important in both. Um, this past fiscal year, you're aware, we did apply for a transit-oriented grant, which would be walking trails and biking trails, um, and using a portion of the bases, and tying the park into the promoted commercial development, and that was due to the Townsend, uh, Public Affairs. And, um, last meeting, you were, you know, we were notified through public, Townsend, when they did their report, that we were unsuccessful, but we'll keep trying. The forms from the May twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, residents were instructed to type amenities they would like to see within the park area, and a park potentially adjacent to Rockwell for any other potential site in Selma. So, this was done as a grant opportunity, as a requirement to get public input. Residents were instructed, many amenities, if we were to use the ponding basin, would be limited based on flooding. So, we, we can't put lights and restrooms, a playground coming on the bottom of the pond, because of, once it floods, electricity and the lack of use from the general public. So, in addition, the residents were instructed that if negotiations didn't go very well with, uh, Fresno County at the time, then this park could be located in any site throughout the city. So, it was kinda more of, what are the amenities you want as a park, and then we would apply for the application based on, kinda, what we received. Uh, September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen meeting, uh, residents were again instructed on the type of amenities they feel Selma needs. Uh, this farm only dealt with the adjacent property to Rockwell Pond as a potential site for a park, because by this time, we knew, uh, Fresno County was going to work with us. And so, we felt confident now having a meeting and say, here's the number one site, what we're looking for, our staff in the city. Again, though, we did say if something was to fail or fall through with the county, uh, we would take these amenities and keep on file, which we have, because we sent you a copy. And so, we could use this for any additional property that might become available in the city. Uh, residents have stated they want and are need city in a new park, uh, just FYI, in the mid-eighties, Schaefer Park was the last park, uh, the City of Selma has constructed. You know, you can minus the pocket park right here, but we're talking a full-sized community park. Uh, the Recreation Commission has always supported a new park, and we've had this discussion two parts, coming before the City Council. Uh, where we are today, if I can see the, the one picture. The outline area in the blue is where we are today, and that's, in, in principle, uh, the City of Selma and Fresno County has come to an agreement, in our negotiations to purchase the twenty-eight acres. Uh, you'd have four acres of coming on north in the blue area you drive in, and then you'd have twenty-eight acres of the park. And that's where we are today.
Is there a price or just?
Uh, we will bring that price to negotiations when we come back to City Council. But there has been a price and an agreement in principle agreed upon between two parties. So, the Board of Supervisors has received our information, and they will be putting on it soon. Uh, if we get their approval, then it'll be coming back to City Council for your approval.
The funds again for the twenty-eight acres is what?
Uh, the funds?
The funds.
Yeah. We would use, uh, park development funds and a portion of the TOT for the purchasing.
So, impact fees will be a majority of it?
Yeah.
Okay, and Mike, the other question, Mike, on that particular county property, uh, there's some restrictions on it, how we can use that on that property. Am I correct, Isaac?
That's correct. Um, because of the, it was purchased with tobacco funds or tobacco bond, if I believe that was correct, um, term. There are some restrictions. Those restrictions are really pertaining to, um, using the, the land for, uh, a funding source. So, you couldn't make a bunch of money doing something on that development. You couldn't put a store there and try and, and things of that nature, and try to, uh, gain profit from that land itself. It had to be for the community.
The only, during our discussion, the only challenge that would come up would be, for us, was a park was a concession stand. If we contract out with a vendor, then as the interim city manager, Moreno just stated, then you have a commercial venture, and that would, that's the only loophole we might have.
What's the limit per acreage on how much revenue you can make per acre? What's the, what's the limit on a?
They didn't state that. They were just saying it's kind of commercial.
That's all I remember.
And how do they enforce it after they sell it? Do they come by and check on it every year?
Well, the obligation follows the property itself. That's why, so they're subject, um, to get the tobacco.
It's a contingency. Okay. It's part of the sale.
I mean, whether they audit it or not, I, I'm uncertain, but, I mean, it is contingency on the property itself, so.
So, uh, based on the feedback and needs of staff, uh, at this point, phase one of the park project is, what we would like to see would be, uh, obviously, an entrance road into the park, parking, restrooms, development disabled, and the community playground equipment. You know, about a year ago, we had some of the, uh, group here, EYSN is what they're called now, and, um, I know our Kaiser grant helped support them, but all of our playground, we, we would like to have a designated playground equipment for the development disabled. That was part of our, um, what we found on the community fact finder also. Um, lighted basketball courts, those are very simple and well-used. And open space with, for, with lights is, is the biggest need in the City of Selma. For youth soccer and youth football. And everything to this point, you know, for things around the city is, is, everything's been conceptual. There's been no actual design of the park or no design of any kind of, uh, here's what we're going to do for sure. We are seeking recommendations from the City Council tonight to continue negotiating with the County of Fresno and available to answer any questions. Uh, we do have several of our youth sports organization members here to support a park. And if approved by the County of Fresno and City of Selma, additional public forms will be held. And we wanna get input on the design and the action, uh, if you, yeah, the second page gives you, I'm sorry. You can kinda see the area there. That's kind of an overhead, more of a visual. We have Eric Modas here from Selma Youth Softball, Frank Hoer here from Selma Youth Soccer, Diego Haro, who represents Selma Soccer, is also our chairperson of our Recreation Commission, uh, Tony Alzuela, which is a Selma Bandits, and Jerry Faino, which is a Selma Youth Football. And did I forget anybody? Uh, Ken Robinson is also here from our Recreation Commission. And Little League President Josh Farney supports a new park also, but he has to work tonight. So, with that, I'd just like to say, um, when you mentioned Townsend, we are meeting with Townsend next Wednesday at eleven to discuss, uh, the upcoming grants. There's Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is guaranteed grant every year up to this point. Uh, that's how Schaefer Park was helped constructed. Um, Land and Water Conservation Fund is paternity, or forever, like they say in Sandlot. When you use Land and Water Conservation Fund, you have to keep the park open. If you close the park, you know, eight years ago, when the budgets hit hard, some of the cities were closing their parks, and they got, uh, a letter from the state saying if you keep this park closed, then you have to reimburse the grant. Even if it's from ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, you have to pay us back. So, uh, that's the grant we're gonna be looking at. And then Prop sixty-eight. Uh, I don't wanna get too much details, but there is the per capita, much like the CDBG, it's based on population, there's a formula. We can expect between two-hundred-and-ten, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand guaranteed. There will be some, uh, grants, urban and rural, uh, we will obviously apply for the rural, and so, Townsend and I will be sitting on next week. And then I know, I think, you might be sitting in with us. I know you're gonna meet after us, but, so, we are looking at that.
Okay, well, you know, Mike, uh, no, no, I understand about the park and everything, but what is it? I wanna know the cost of that property, you know, you know, the cost. I, we need a cost.
We can bring that back to you when we actually start getting the documentation and the contracts together.
I mean, to anything to move forward, we need a cost, you know, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna have a blank check, and, uh...
You're, you're not approving the purchase of the property at this point in time.
Yeah.
We're probably looking within the market range of, uh, eighteen to twenty-five, uh, per square acre.
And, and then the, the other issue, too, we have, uh, businesses around it. I, I, I like to hear their input, you know, their future input, because they're a part of it, you know?
Well, this, the idea was a city park. We're not asking to approve any funding tonight. We're asking just to approve the continuation negotiation with the county, which had been approved many, several years ago. So, we've just been on the fast track now with the little bit more stabilization in the management.
So, we heard tonight from the engineer that, you know, the approach on the streets and roads is like a, a collective approach, of putting money together from different grants. Can we do the same thing with, with parks? Can we put a hodgepodge, a collection of money together from the various grants, like this Prop sixty-eight, and maybe some of these other Land and Water Conservation Funds?
With per capita, it's gonna be CDBG, you're gonna be guaranteed the funding, you just have to show them how you're spending on parks. Not a lot of, uh, it's really open, as long as it's for a park.
If I remember from Townsend, funding apps begin in April, next spring, which one funding starts?
You know, I would be hopeful, to be honest. I would think June, September. Yeah, because this was just approved in this past June, so it's still with the voters, just fairly voter-approved. We have some, a lot of, uh, um, opportunities. One of the major criteria will, will happen, though, it has to be an open park. So, if you're trying to fund just the baseball fields when the fences are locked at night and only games during the week, um, you're not gonna get funding for that. It has to be where people can go on a weekend or nighttime and still use the park, such as the courts and the basketball courts, um, the open space. If soccer and football aren't practicing there, because they're just seasonal, then that's, that's how you become eligible.
So, when I was here for the, for the nights, the rollout, when we had the, the community input nights, it, it seemed like it was, the vision was restricted to the bowl. And it was, you know, de, we were definitely told, there's only so much you could do with that land within the recharge basin, because it's so close to the water table, so you couldn't put bathrooms there, not a lot of lights. You know, it's pretty restricted to playing fields and maybe, you know, soccer fields and baseball fields, but not a lot of infrastructure. It seems like tonight, we're, we're growing out of that. Not only do we still have that acreage within the recharge basin, which could still be used when it's not raining, um, but the city's expanding its vision to the, the part over the bowl there. And I invite everybody to go out, go out floral, past Walmart, past Toyota, you know, right on, uh, DeWolfe, and then, you know, you'll see the Rockwell Pond on your right, the, the park would be off to the left. And it's really exciting. I think it could really look great. It'd be a great plus for the, for the city. It's just a matter of... Now, it's got a shift, you know, from being in that basin where I think the original park was drawn to, to, to going on top and having more possibilities, which would lead me to wonder if we should get a new community input session with maybe, because of the greater possibilities here. It seems like there are more possibilities than when we first got together.
Well, I, I could tell you, um, when I was asked as a recreation director, get involved, it was on the top land. Because it's, we were asked from council, the city manager recommended we go to Fresno, City, County Fresno, because that's the property we don't own. That's why this all started back then, because we own, we, we were obtaining ownership of the CID of the park.
And there was a potential, I, I remember hearing that we may put the park somewhere else. You know, it could be put...
But, but I would also recommend, as, you know, I think, and our due justice of the city, um, things that I have heard is a dog park, because it is a ponding basin, although a lot smaller, it's grassed, it looks very nice. And then I hear feedback, you know, like the ponding basin on orange behind Lincoln, near Lincoln. And so, if funding was available, and there's any way we could beautify the, the, um, ponding basin, however that may be, that would be a bonus to both the economic development, commercial venture there, and our park, and our city. If we could somehow make that look more desirable, it would have a nice tie-in to you have the commercial development, the ponding basin, and then our park.
Has there been any thought given to how the recharge basin and the twenty-eight acres would reflect the commercial developments around? Or how will the city make sure that there's some sort of give and take and some sort of reflection there?
There has been talk, um, between connectivity between the two projects, um, maybe some pedestrian trails, bike trails and things of that nature. Even a water feature at the, at the very front of the ponding basin next to the, to the freeway itself, and kinda give that overall feel and tie it together for the community itself. Yes.
In addition to the, the development, Floro has, um, bike paths now. So, provided the opportunity, a person can come down Floro now on the bike trails and connect to the, to the area you were talking about, near the ponding basin and the park. That'd be a good tie-in.
And the four acres is gonna be used for a road that will also connect up with the commercial development there? Off of DeWolfe, it'll go all the way in to the road, the road up of?
The road, if you go back to the map itself. Moreno, can you go back to the map?
Where, where's the road gonna go?
See, that's, DeWolfe is on the, on, yeah.
This is DeWolfe. The floor is here, you come up DeWolfe, and you turn right into the park.
That's the road. That's the ponding basin.
And then this would be the open projected projects.
For future development.
Yeah, and then Toyota, Walmart, they're all kind of this corner.
Okay, so the road's gonna go in south, south of the basin.
Well, north of the basin, actually. North, north.
Very fast. As soon as you pass the basin, that would be the road.
But how far is it gonna go in?
They'll go all the way through the park and come back out. So, that'll be your entry point from the park into the, the major open space, and it probably would drive around the open space and come back.
But we don't have a conceptual of that.
No, no. That's just a connectivity for the major portion of the park.
Okay.
So, there's no design, there's no layout. This is really just our conceptual. Correct.
And, and Mike, the next question, if we decide to put a, a future bridge, way, in the beginning, way back then, in the days when I first got on the council, on Dinubo. Now, where would that, how would that affect that?
We did a new, the bridge here, because of this, uh, water connection, and the water feature here, as you come down there, I can have a water feature. You can come see the park, the water feature, bridge, and you walk through the bike trails all around the ponding basin.
Okay.
One thing important to notice, too, is, is there any conceptual, because if you pay for a designer, like, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars to design my park, and the Board of Supervisors says no, or the City Council would have, you know, decide to say no, it was expensive, you wanna make. The reason we have a, we've always done a conceptual is because, let's get this approved first, to get the, the sale appropriate, then we can hire on, uh, landscape and development. And I still wanna have more community meetings to help us design this.
We need more community meetings, get more citizen input, because it's changed now. The scope's changed. But another thing is, um, for these grants, do they normally require you to have plans already? Or do plans come with the, do they just want sketch drawings?
If you require you to own the property, that's why we didn't apply last year, if that's the deed. Uh, the State of California, no, you can, you can apply for purchasing a property for the development. Uh, the State of California, the ones that are coming Prop sixty-eight, if you can show you own the land, you're gonna score more points, because...
Yeah, but what if you have blueprints? Yeah, but what if you have designs for the land? Does that give you more points, too? If you have something ready to show them what you're gonna do with the land?
Well, no, as long as you own it, you're gonna get more points. Because they really give us money, because you own the land, because you know where you're gonna use the money to develop it.
Gotcha. So, we're gonna own it.
You can give the money to own, to buy it, and then there's always that doubt, when you think they're gonna have the money to develop it. So, if you already own the land, then they feel more comfortable.
Great. So, when you apply for the grant, do you usually apply with some plans that you send to the grant, to the actual funding source? Or do you just send drawings, concepts?
Yeah.
And right now, we're at the stage of just concept. Is that right?
Yeah.
With what we have, and that's just in the basin right now?
They're gonna ask for list, restrooms, basketball courts.
Because to my knowledge, city doesn't own any land on top of the basin, is that correct?
That's correct.
At this point? Okay. That's all county land at this point.
Correct. County is just ninety-plus acres.
But they're gonna be voting on it really soon.
Yes, for our portion.
Well, yeah, they're, they're waiting for our further direction to kinda solidify this process, so they can vote on it, then turn it around and draft documents, so that we can add.
And we also worked in agreement that they would give us a, I think you remember, discussing this, too, is first try to refusal. We have the ability to purchase some extra, um, land if in the future we need to, and they'll work.
So, it'd be an option?
It's only an option.
On the land?
Yeah.
What can they do with the land? What can the city do with the land? It's tobacco money, so they can, can't make money off of it, but what, what could they put in that could go right up to the, to the park?
It was a juvenile facility.
Could they put a prison there?
I, I mean, I think at one point it was talks about public works facility. I mean, I, we don't know. At this point, we don't know. I, I do know that they are, um, anxious to assist us in building this park. It will help increase the property value of their portion, if we develop this park, so.
Now, even if, let's just suppose for worst-case scenario, we do purchase it, and they do decide to put in something that we object to. We always have that right to object, don't we?
I'd have to check. It'd be based off the agreement. I, I, I don't, I can't have to do that at this time.
Build that into the agreement?
Yeah, that we have a, a right to object to whatever future development they put into their land. So, I guess what we're, I, if I hear everyone, I hear these...
Well, I think there'd be built-in, maybe for a purchase, but I don't know about an objection, what's next to the property.
Well, we can comment with that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we can always comment on what the county is putting in, just as we commented a few weeks ago about the proposed solar plant. Um, but again, the county has legislative authority to do what they want with their land, just as we do. Part of the negotiations could be in the purchase and sale agreement, perhaps could be to put certain exclusions on what the county could do, so if there were certain sensitive uses, like a juvenile justice facility or something of the like, that we... that we don't want adjacent to it, we can try to discuss that with the county, whether or not they agree.
It's kinda like putting that community room in the police station, just not a great, not a great combination, I really wouldn't want a juvenile detention facility.
It doesn't seem to fit, correct.
It seems incongruous, so if, if we could do that now, look ahead and put that into the agreement, where we have some sort of say over what comes in, you know, next to the park, where the city has some sort of leverage on that and some sort of input, that would be helpful to the degree that we, that the city could.
And how they purchase property is going to determine a lot of this too, because they're under a little bit more, their hands are tied more also.
Right, if, if it is tobacco, if the money was, if the property was purchased with tobacco taxes, it's likely that it's public purpose property, and so something like a juvenile detention center would be public purpose, so.
That's why I asked.
But the park would be public purpose, public purpose, purpose is a very broad term, and you can even find, you know, housing sometimes to be public purpose. So we just need to, um, figure out what exactly those restrictions are, and then see if the county would agree to some greater land use restrictions.
How much land does the county own around there, what's the total?
About twenty-eight acres?
No, they, it's, I've heard two different numbers, it's about ninety-plus.
Ninety-plus.
Now you take away the twenty-eight.
So even with twenty-two, this county would have sixty-two more acres to develop, they could put, yeah, they could put a big chunk out there.
Yeah, no, they could put another, yeah.
So I'd be in favor of putting in some exclusions.
Well, we're, we're not at that phase at the moment, but that is something we can discuss when we get to that, that phase.
That, that would seem reasonable, it seemed like the county would listen to that.
I mean, that'll all be part of the negotiation tactics for the agreement.
Uh, Shaffer Park's twenty-three acres.
So this'll be the biggest park to date in Selma, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And we need it.
We do, we can use it, we definitely need it.
Um, you know, I, I give, obviously, there's a few people here opportunity, but, you know, next year it even gets a little tougher, especially youth soccer. Youth soccer is the number one, based on participants, about seven hundred kids.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred and twelve.
Yeah. Your year, eight thirty.
It's eight hundred and twelve this year.
So, they'll, they'll have some more impact next year with Lincoln Middle Schools, everything has tightened up. Um, after-school programs have tightened up, um, some schools' gates are locked, has tightened up, and so, you know, Brellinger gets hit by soccer, youth football, uh, Shaffer gets hit by girls softball, youth football, and so, spreading everybody out is, is really important, especially, um, as we continue to grow as a city.
How many fields could you put in twenty-eight acres, or twenty-four, I guess, with the four acre setback?
Probably about three.
What about soccer fields?
Yeah, how many soccer fields and how many baseball fields?
You guys need room.
Twenty-eight acres?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
For twenty-four acres, for soccer fields, you would get plenty of them.
Let, let me explain real quick, have you seen Fowler, the new little sports park next to Fowler High School? Okay, that's five acres, and so for us to do two small youth football fields, we would wanna do seven acres, because Fowler has a nice youth football field and they have a practice field next to each other. You can't play two games there, because your left fielder on the east field overlaps with your right fielder on the west field, so. Our goal was always two fi- seven acres, because we could put two fields on each corner, and you could have two games at once. And so, for this project, we were looking at two hundred yard football fields next to each other as open space, with lights, so the football and soccer have practice space, and then work on. So ball fields, two youth fields, you could do with about six to seven acres.
That'd be awesome.
Wow.
Yeah.
A major improvement.
You guys, absolutely.
Hey, just, just to think of the scale of this project, sorry, just to think of the scale of this project, if you think of Shaffer Park and the baseball diamonds and the current, the tournaments they currently have, um, not necessarily as a revenue stream, but as a community park, where you can bring other communities, have soccer tournaments, football tournaments, more practice space, we have the full open space that, that this community actually needs to be able to develop, things of that nature.
But that's just the point, we need to combine the commercial use of the fields as well with the use for sports, we could, I mean, the city could really benefit from both uses, both the sports uses and the commercial uses, we're gonna have a commercial mall right there, a commercial development, and this makes a lot of sense for the city from.
To incorporate it.
Yes, from many different standpoints, can we hear from the sports teams, how, what your feeling is about the, the proposed mall?
State your name and your, uh, correct address, please.
Uh, Frank Hoyt, uh, seven eight eight seven, South Delray Avenue, I actually do not live in the city of Selma anymore, but, uh, grew up here, so I'm gonna be part of it, uh, I'll talk since I'm the largest sport, uh, we have both football people and softball here. Honestly, this park, we just need some flat land, um, softball would be happy if soccer would get off their fields, you know? Um, the one thing that frustrates soccer is the most, is we're the largest youth sport in the city of Selma, by far, you can look at the numbers, by far, and, uh, we have eight hundred ki- eight hundred and twelve kids this year, and we have nowhere to play, we have to rely on the high school, I mean, the Selma Unified School District. If you guys don't know, I have to pay Selma Unified School District for these kids to play on their fields, when the city of Selma has no parks for them. You know, and that's one thing that frustrates me, is I have to raise these fees for these kids, because if I want them to practice at Jackson School, I have to pay Selma Unified School District to allow the kids to practice there. And, uh, so we're just trying to get flat land for these kids to play, um, again, keep them out of trouble and keep them active. And if we can get however many acres, anything's possible, with them ripping up the high school next year, they're, they're pretty much kicking us out of Abraham Lincoln, and if they do that, the city of Selma won't have a soccer league, because we have nowhere to play. You know, you have eight hundred and twelve kids now, they're gonna be where, during the whole fall season, you know? We do one month of sign-ups, six days that we do sign-ups, and we have eight hundred and twelve kids come out to sign up.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Huge numbers.
Yeah, yeah, we have the hu- we have, like I said, like, farthest, largest, you know, we play with Fowler, um, because Fowler's not as big, and we like to keep the communities active with each other, and so city of Fowler actually plays with us, because they have about, wow, four hundred kids? About four hundred kids, and so, yeah, and Kingsburg as well plays with us too, since we're the largest in the middle, they all come to us, and, you know, we play at Abraham Lincoln, and if you go there, you can go there this Saturday, anybody's welcome, um, we have ten soccer fields going out there from eight o'clock in the morning till two o'clock in the afternoon, all ten fields are running.
There's definitely a use for the additional.
Oh, yeah, there's over fifty games a, uh, a Saturday, plus we play on Sundays too, which are our competitive teams that are, um, from U-twelve and above. So we go all the way to U-nineteens with soccer, we start at the age of eighteen months to eighteen years old.
Yeah, and then.
Amazing.
Yeah, between you and the, uh, football squad.
Oh, yeah, again, you know, with the two football squads here, we have the Bandits and the Grizzlies, you know, they're around a hundred and thirty people each, but, again, like, what I was saying is, they'd be nice to have pi- place, you know, Bandits have the Shaffer Park, which is cool, and they have Brett Linger, but, uh, baseball would be nice, you'd be happy if they would go out to the park with us, so then the fields aren't getting ruined. You know, we're just trying to get everybody space to have fun with the kids.
We agree, absolutely.
Yeah, you know, and here's the deal, the, one thing is, inside the ponding basin, it's gonna be hard, because like how he said, I play, my league pays all the way till November seventeenth, and there's gonna be water in that pond, you know, anybody knows that, and so, with these kids now, what am I do, cancel, because we put a park inside of a pond? You know, it's gonna be hard with lights, hard with bathrooms, everything, we all know that, and so buying that land on the other side is gonna be most beneficial to the community and to the kids. You know, the park, the ponding basin would be nice for like, you know, trails and stuff, but, once water gets in there, what do we tell them, oh, can't play, it rained. Huh? Yeah, we switched to water polo, yeah, what are we?
Fishing.
Yeah, yeah, this is a competition fishing now.
Okay.
Thanks for your input.
Thanks for your input.
Thank you, Frankie.
I think this is just an update.
Yeah, updates, and then, uh, anybody else can come up and speak?
Good evening, Mayor Avalos.
Give your name and address, correct address, please.
Uh, council members, my name's Eric Moniz, I'm president of the Selma Girls Softball League, and just to backpack on what Frank just said. Oh, excuse me, uh, one three one nine Goldridge.
Okay.
Goldridge, um, just to backpack on Frank, uh, we got one hundred and seventy-five kids, uh, we try to help one another out by, okay, let's have them in the, on the grass area, uh, softball fields, and, or just let them have more room. It's, it's overcrowding now, as, as, with football there, you got sports now, uh, softball's a year-round sport. They're, they're playing, uh, we're having success in softball, we're getting more kids out, so, uh, just a large, large area like this, what they've been saying is, is would really help out all the youth sports, and it, you can, you can see it succeeding with the high school level, with our student athletes, I mean, winning the championships in softball, football, soccer, it, it just helps out, oh, and wrestling, by the way, I'm a big wrestler. But it just helps, uh, for the youth, it just really does, and hopefully we could get this done, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, okay, anybody else from the public, state your name and address, correct, please?
Hi, my name's Diana Cataris, two two zero one Barbara Street, um, I've been volunteering with Selma Youth Football for the past seven years, and, um, I, I love the idea of this park, and commercially speaking, you want something that looks nice off the freeway to get people off the freeway, you know, when you're driving by and you see something like that, to, you know, oh hey, let's go over there, you know, you get to go by, you know, even people, whenever they wanna go to go to Selma, it's just, you know what, we're going to the park, and that's on the way, oh hey, this is on the way, you know, just to see more of Selma, um, commercially speaking, you don't wanna be a hidden treasure, you don't wanna be something only the locals know. So for the park to be that beautiful, to get people, even whenever they come travel to play these games, you know, they'll get to see what's in Selma. So, um, I, I would really love that park, um, we one year had, we right now have three teams, but one year we had five teams. It was so hard to practice at Brett Linger, um, we only have certain parts that have the lights. We practice on the baseball field side, and, um, we respect the infield, so we practice on the outfield, and it was really hard, because we had, um, people who had to be over there where, um, they have parties, you know, the benches and the, the little, um, pavilions that you rent, and we had, team had to play out there, but then whenever it got dark, the light wouldn't even reach over there, so we would love to be, you know, able to go to five teams, um, but realistically, we always just stop our roster, because we know we only have room for three, but to be able to, you know, help, you know, that many kids who wanna play football, that would be great, open space is really needed in this community. And just like a fun place for, you know, people to go and, and play sports, it'd be, it'd be really nice.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, anybody else can speak, state your name and correct address, please?
Hi, how you doing, my name is Jerry Fino, two two oh one Barbara Street, um, I'm the president of Selma Grizzlies. Um, just to touch bases again, uh, we play at Brellinger Park, uh, before we had five teams, but now we kinda work with the junior highs, so we cut off seventh and eighth grade. So we run kindergarten through sixth, and it would be a great opportunity to have flat land, like, we just had a kid break his ankle at Brellinger Park, because there's so much dips and holes, and every year we go and fill the holes as much as we can. This year, I think they just filled up the Cal Ripken Field, and we're out there tearing up the Cal Ripken Field, I mean, we're not in the infield, but we're in the outfield, and it'll be a great opportunity for just us to have somewhere to practice, you know, and I know that, I know everybody would like to see flat land, and a great opportunity, you know? I just, uh, hope that you guys consider it, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else, come forward, state your name and correct address?
My name is Diego Harrell, I live at thirty-seven oh one Olive Street here in Selma, and I've been a transplant, uh, citizen for twenty-eight, twenty-eight years, um, we tried projects, uh, in the way of a sports complex for at least eighteen of my years here. Um, that's why I'm, I am your chairman for your Parks and Rec Commission, um, to see something happen. Um, we've been pushed around and pushed around, we're not gonna be pushed around anymore, we need results, as you can see and hear. These people need some flat land, Mister Avalos, I'm begging you to take into consideration everything these people are asking you, because it means something to me in my heart. We need this, we don't need another correctional facility built for these kids, we need a park. And I think that says it all, we're building more prisons because there's less parks. So, on that note, all these kids are having a great time, um, we've taken teams from our soccer program. Um, I'm not here to brag on myself, but I just got back from the regionals in Salt Lake City, Utah, where our team took fifth, out of eighteen.
Good job.
That's amazing.
Um, and we had, and we actually took three.
Good job.
So, it's, um, I, you know, football's doing great, um, but again, when the school takes away that camp, the, the stadium, we're, we're not gonna have anywhere to play, and that's not a joke, that's a serious thing. I've had discussions with Mister Texera, and we're gonna be out. So we either go to fifteen different locations, which is, as you well know, most families have three or four kids in our organization playing at different times, and are gonna be at different locations, and that's gonna be hard on them. You know, we need to give them the quality of travel that they need, and we should expect with their tax money, now we know that there's a grant, or there's some grandfathered in thing with the schools to, that allows the green space to be covered for whatever funding, but we don't have the green space coming, so where's the money going? Okay, that's my questions, and that's why I'm trying to get to the bottom of it, and I see my time is running close, being out, Mister Avalos, I know who wants to go home, and, uh, the rest of us wanna go home, so I just wanna thank you, thank you for allowing me to chair, and, uh, we'll keep working for the citizens of this community, okay?
Thank you, thank you very much, okay, anybody else can make a comment, state your name and correct address? You could do it in two.
Council members, Honorable Mayor, my name is Cliff Tietelien, I'm a resident of Fresno, and as you're aware, we have a proposed development that, uh, is here in Selma, which will be comprises sixty-two acres, and approximately six hundred thousand square feet of commercial. I've had the opportunity and privilege to speak with two of you, but the others, I look forward to speaking with you once we get the appropriate understanding and clarification from the city attorney, I think is very important. I listened today, tonight earlier about the struggles with the construction cost, and I listened to you speak, and respectfully I say that my father used to say, he can never beat a man in his own business, and you know your business, you're talking about construction. Here you're talking about planning, you're talking to labor, their interest is training people. You're talking about a facility that the community needs, but because you're not directly involved in the construction and development business, you really don't quite know how to get there with the number. The reason that I bring that up, and by the way, as a citizen that is involved in Selma, I'd be happy to help if I were ever asked, but that being said, we're talking about fiscal considerations and how we approach a project, and how we approach the gathering of the information that we need in order to make it affordable, in order to make it at the end result executed in a manner that serves the community as they've asked and as the community needs. I'm totally in favor of a park, I think the community is in dire need of a park. When you think about it from the standpoint of opportunity, we can build a building, and we can build a box, and we can get cars to park in a parking lot, and you can generate some sales tax. That's if we can get that big tenant or get tenants to come to the community by comparison of all of those retailers' opportunities, if we can get their attention. And like Fresno, like Selma, like many of our valley communities, we don't compare to the opportunistic economics that these retailers consider in the greater metropolitan cities. And when I go into detail, and when I talk about the detail, and I talk about the approach and the collection of information, here you have, you're undertaking the consideration of a park, we're talking twenty-eight acres. I've done a little bit of research, not much, I'll be candid about it, but there's a park in really, it costs them three hundred thousand a year, and it's an eight-acre park, and I listen to the concerns and the interests and the needs to conserve money and budget. So, I don't discourage you from considering further the negotiations with the county, however, I would like to say it with this sense of caution, the planning needs to start organically. Not, well, we have an opportunity, let's go out and buy twenty-eight acres. I happen to have a large development right on the river, uh, adjacent to the river bottom. The River Conservancy got a bunch of money, just like what you're talking about, but it's earmarked and restricted only for capital, acquis- and restricted only for capital acquisitions and capital improvements. And as a result of the fact that they have no operational dollars for fire, life and safety, we have a significant amount of homeless, drug addicted people that are of, for whatever the reason, ill or less fortunate. And my heart goes out to them. But nonetheless, that activity will reside at a park or gravitate to an area where there is not optimal maintenance. And it will resort to an area that's not effectively designed where you always have traffic. Chief Garner, I know he'll attest to this truth. The people, and I can too, on Floral Avenue from those homes, they didn't vaca, they were vacated for a week and they were just blasted with people. We ultimately tore them down. But having activity, there, you have a significant amount of the community that wants sports and I totally advocate, and we've had conversations about making it a regional attraction to complement and support in a reciprocal manner, a regional shopping center. Now, how do you get there? What I'm proposing to you tonight is to take the information from the community, how many fields you need to balance with the schools, with the, with the uh, population of the children and the related activities. Take a look at how by making it a regional attraction, you can create and a profit center, and I don't know if that's an acceptable way of phrasing it, but a means of generating dollars that will in turn support the maintenance costs of the park. So you can have a vibrant park. By, and one of those ways is to bring that park close to activity. Of concern to me, I'll be candid with you, Mr. Kirchner said that the, one of the restriction on those dollars is you can't lock the park. Well, right or wrong or true or not, there's got to be some methodology of his security and you're going to do that with lots of lights or lots of activity if you can't lock it up at all. Now, let me go to the plan and if, and if you don't mind, I know I'm over the time, but if you don't mind and you brought the plan up, I'd like to share with you some of my thoughts. Is this permissible that I continue a couple more minutes?
Okay, we'll give you a couple, I'll give you a couple of minutes.
Oh, that's okay.
No.
No, I mean, if, 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 if it's inappropriate at all.
It's up, it's already up, Cliff. Go ahead.
So.
You hear.
Somebody said, the, the, there's a square right in the middle of the drawing and where that swiggle goes, yeah. Now go up to the left diagonally, right there. There, there would be a trail there that would link to our development. I've submitted plans. Chief Garner will agree with me and I haven't asked him. That trail will lead to the fire exit and the backside of our theater. Now, one thing about Fresno, about our valley, people are used to driving and people aren't used to walking long distances. The distance, when you take the twenty-eight acres, I've already addressed the financial responsibilities. When you take it that far away from our center, it will be of no impact to our center. It will be minimal impact because people aren't going to be inclined to drive. Let me caution you by inviting you to visit the city of Fresno and you all have colleagues at the city of Fresno and ask them about the issues they have because they put in trails and that's all they put in. And they do have water. So what I want to suggest to you is continue your negotiation. We can add flat land, take all the community considerations and move dirt around to create the flat land that is in the most strategic and effective locations on the land you already own. Maybe instead of buying twenty-eight acres, you buy seven acres and move the dirt and you created twenty-eight acres of effective used land. Because there is a substantial amount of flat land adjacent to what will be the shopping center. You or I, not, there's nobody in this is, if you had a choice of walking three hundred feet to get to an activity like a theater or walk in three miles, I'll exaggerate, or let it be three quarters of a mile, what are you going to do? You're going to choose not to walk. You're going to either drive. The way that driveway is described, you're going to go all the way around Floral. I will now conclude. If you drive out, some of you have walked, have gone out there. We don't have dinuba interchange. It is an area that is flat land. It is an area that's undeveloped. If you do a park and if we did a shopping center, you have two pieces. If they're planned with the community interest in mind and done strategically so, now you have one big, powerful entity between the park, the pond and the development. That's what's going to make the money. That's where the city's going to prosper. And that's what's going to allow us to bring tenants so you can have a shopping center. I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Cliff. Thank you. Okay, anybody, oh.
Let me just clarify. A locked park, we can lock the park ten-thirty PM to six AM. That's not what I meant. A locked park means you can't have amenities that are totally only, yeah, inaccessible during the normal working hours that the community can never get into the park unless they have to pay or be a membership. So as long as it's an open park on weekends and nights where people can drive in, that's fine. But we are allowed to lock a park. I understand security and homeless, we have that many of our parks, so just a clarification for the grant.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, anybody else? Okay, I refer back to, uh, council for discussion and, uh, in regard in direction.
I think it was just an update.
Update on information, right?
It is. There's no action at this time. It was more, again, you kind of, kind of saw a common theme today. Uh, we're giving you updates, giving you feedback, giving you where we're at, what we're doing, what's going on. We're doing a lot of past, present and future tonight, getting you all the information that you need so that we continue moving forward with our projects um, in a expedient manner that, that we know we're getting the appropriate direction and we continue moving forward.
Yeah, you know, and once again, as we got, I, you know, you know, we have development going around our community because there are, you know, once again, there are, there are driven force with money for our community and we want to do it right, you know, because we want, in communities, we only have one shot at it, you know what I mean? And, and, and in life itself, you want to include the, uh, the developers or, or surrounding developers around the area, have some kind of input or some kind of joint meeting together. That way, you know, because they're investing a lot of money in our, in our community and we want them to be a kind of a partner. What good relationship, good business, good, good partnership, you know what I mean?
Um, when it comes to designing and, and looking at the park as a whole and how it's going to look and feel, we will definitely be reaching out to the community, um, the developers, Mr. Tellian. Um, we'll, we'll all be invited to come and discuss that project and the look and feel so we can get a, a project that is satisfactory to the whole, to the masses.
Yeah, and, and like, like, uh, you've got says, you know, I said earlier, you know, on that property on the county, you know, we got to make sure that we don't have a, a criminal institution right next to us because it, it'll destroy any kind of development or any kind of park. Uh, people don't like to go in front of a juvenile hall for a, a baseball game and everything like, oh man, the criminals are there, you know what I mean? I mean, it, it sends a wrong message to the community, you know what I mean? And we want to be a, the center, our, our developing people want to invest their money wisely and they want to do it, invest it in a good community and in a community that live here want to feel safe, you know what I mean? They don't want to see something like, and, um, in that situation in our community, you know? So I want more input as far as the county, as far as if we decide to buy something in that magnitude in the county. Uh, like you bet says, we want some kind of a little more, you know, uh, some say in the, in the issue as far as, uh, because that's a lot, they have what, over sixty acres left to if we decide to buy it, you know, still. And they can do what they want with it, you know, I, you know, I know they have lots saved, but we should have some kind of input on this if we are going to do some kind of like buy on their property.
Correct. So we'll, we'll continue moving forward with the process and corporate work currently at, um, take it back to their, um, the board supervisors. Um, continue with the process, get the agreements in place, obviously bring into the loop, uh, city council, um, or the city attorney so that we can review that process. And again, it's going to come back to you again at that standpoint so we can have further discussion. Is this the right pro, process in which we want to continue the future? Uh, can, can continue to grab, or, or gather community input, uh, from the developers and from the citizens of Selma and continue forward.
Okay.
Could I just make a quick comment? You know, tonight we've talked about the police station, biggest public works project ever in the city and the parks project, largest park ever in the city. This is the future of Selma that we're talking about tonight. This is a really, really important meeting. And I think what we're seeing from the police station is we got to do it right. We have to plan it and we have to do the right thing, get community input and get the input from the developers. You know, we had an ethics meeting and we talked about the conversations with, with developers. And council members can have conversations with developers, just can't discuss the individual projects themselves, but can have contact. So that's always good to know. But tonight, we, we really discussed two very important projects and I think the city council is here for oversight and I think we do need to be kept in the loop on this so that people can be kept in the loop because that's who we represent. I think it's very important to keep coming back and getting, get, having us provide that oversight so that the people can see it and having the, the, the input from the citizens. We could see, it's just so clear that we need park space. We absolutely need park space. We have to do it the right way. Is twenty-eight acres the magic number? Who knows? That's up, up to staff to, to come up with the details on that and bring that back to us. But I think we're headed in the right direction there. And I think the police station needs a lot of work. I think we need to keep pushing and pushing on that because it didn't sound like there's a whole lot of, uh, leeway in the, in the PLA. So that's something that we're going to need staff to really, really push on to make sure that there's some give there and there's some room for negotiation. But overall, we're heading in the right direction and we're moving forward and this is, this is very positive. We just need to keep going.
Okay.
Let, oh, let me tell.
Oh, go ahead.
It was quiet the whole time. I want the last word.
Is this the last word?
Yes, it is.
I was going to get a question comment.
I just wanted to say, Selma hasn't built a park in about thirty-five years, more or less. And for a town our size, that's ridiculous. And I agree with everything I heard. Planning is key.
I agree.
We need a park. We need it yesterday. So please staff, do your best to move us forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now we'll move on to the next item. Okay.
Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, tha- thank you, thank you. We're, we're not done yet, guys. You can leave so soon. Uh, well, there, there, no, no, there's another, there's another comment here. Don't run, don't run away, guys. Come back here. You're there so long. Okay. Uh, department reports. Let's go with the, uh, let's go with Public Works. Shane?
Couple of quick things. I'm happy to say that we're in the process of hiring a new fleet mechanic. We've been out without one for about six weeks now. Uh, he accepted the offer. He's going through his background, fingerprint, drug screen and hopefully he'll be on board in about three weeks.
Okay.
Uh, another thing I'm happy to say is that the Lincoln restrooms are complete and fully functioning.
All right.
And the wall is down?
That's been a process.
What time?
It's been a while.
Yeah, it took a while. Yeah, that was kind of the grand opening for the restrooms.
They, they broke it. They broke it in, the car show.
And, uh, one more thing I want to share with you guys is, uh, we got a new Public Works administrative assistant and she started today.
All right.
Which was needed. And, uh, I'll bring her next, uh, council meeting introduced to you that.
Okay, thank you, Shane. Hey, the good news, see? I like it. Okay, we're going to go to fire. You're up.
So real quick, um, fire season is in full swing. So as of right now, we have three personnel out. We have two on the Delta Fire, which that's the big fire up north and one's still out on the Mendocino Complex. Uh, so we are doing our part as a city, um, to assist as best we can in everything that's going on in the state of California.
Thank you. Chief, Gardner?
Thank you. You guys can probably hear me. Our final, um, bringing broken infraurs back to life event of the summer will take place this Saturday. It's going to be held at Valley Life Church. The block party itself starts at ten o'clock. We'll go till two. Uh, this, this event is preceded by a march through the city.
March through the city.
Um, a march for Jesus as it's referred to and, um, that starts at eight o'clock. He, um, we look for, hopefully you guys can make it. It'll, we'll go till two o'clock in the afternoon. And our next event after that would be partnering with Selma Cares at Christmas time. So, that's it.
And that's a good event to attend, my, very good. Okay, uh, Mike Kirchner, you're up.
Uh, for sake of time, I think pretty much every reporter was in our weekly reader last Friday. Um, just FYI, today was the first day of, uh, food booth, local nonprofit youth groups, churches can register for the band festival. So we have three already registered. We'll take up to ten.
All right, okay. I think you have three roles. You have the city manager, community development and finance, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Multitask.
I have quite a few things here today to report. Um, I'm happy to report Javier is back, our code enforcement officer. So he's back in full swing. Um, also the McCall Enrolls, uh, structure right across the street. Um, we're able to communicate with an individual and discuss the homeless within that walkway. So he has agreed to actually gate it. So it is now gated completely at night.
Oh, okay, good. We finally got with the property owner and they said okay?
That's correct. There, the, the gate is actually up, so he locks it up every night. So, so that's kind of cleaned up our issue that we're currently having at that development.
That's good.
Um, been reaching out to Sister Cities and they have agreed to actually come out and do a presentation for us on our next, uh, council meeting. Um, the energy assessment that we agreed to with NG, uh, it's going to start tomorrow. So we'll be moving forward with that project and I'll be happy to report at the next meeting where we're at and keep you updated as we go.
Can you, on that particular item, can you kind of keep us posted, you know, with it early as possible?
I'll continue to update you as we go along the process. Right now, we're in the, kind of the communication phase and starting to walk, do the walkarounds. Uh, public, Public Works is going to be a great asset within that and, and take them around, do it toward the city. Um, next item is Floral Avenue Study. We will be meeting here with Caltrans and COG uh, for the first discussion of what that study's going to look like. That's coming up Thursday.
Um, wh- where's that going to be held? Here?
I believe it's actually at COG.
At COG? Okay.
Um, one note to, to make, the community cleanup, which is coming up in October. There has been a slight change. Normally we have it at the old Summer disposal yard. That property has actually been leased out. So thankfully the school district is actually assisting us and, and loaning out the school bus yard to be able to, to have that function.
Okay, very good.
So I'll update you as that, that is solidified. Um, is that final? They're working on the agreement, waste management and unified, but, um, that's where we're looking to have. So we're happy to, to, to report that we are keeping it within the city, uh, this year.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, code enforcement, you've actually asked and directed me to come back with a date in which we can have a conversation in a full, a larger scale between myself and, uh, the code enforcement officer and your city attorney. Um, we're looking at, I believe it was October fifteenth to have that scheduled on the agenda so we can have that communication. I'm sorry, fifteenth. Thank you. Um, another update, um, as you're well aware, we have contracted out, uh, to a different entity to perform our planning services in the short term. Um, the individual that was currently doing the process is not with us. We knew, do you have another planner that is currently, currently in, his name is Aaron Carpenter. So he's already reached out to the, the, the developers and things of that nature and touch base so that he can keep, put his name out there, make sure that you know the appropriate contact is and things of that nature. Um, nothing's going to change. The, the email address that the prior individual had is the same email address that this individual is going to be using as, so we won't skip a beat. We'll continue moving forward.
So it's the same contractor?
Same contractor, just a different individual, correct.
Okay, same, same company.
Correct, not Richard. His name is Aaron Carpenter.
All right. Anything else?
Also, I spoke to Henry and he is happy to come back and accept the reward that was offered at the last meeting. Um, he will be here in the first meeting in October. The first.
First, first of October, right?
And that's all I had to report.
Oh man, see, I lost the report.
See, oh, I, I stopped last time, so it was.
No, no, I made up for today. Okay, for the attorney, you're up.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Another report? Oh man, you're up to now, girl. Okay, we'll go to the council reports. We'll go with ladies first.
Thank you. Uh, the biggest news I would like to report is that we had a really exciting day. Raina, help me with the date. That was on September twelfth. Am I correct? Yes, on September twelfth, we had one hundred and twenty second graders. Yes, on September twelfth, we had one hundred and twenty second graders from Jackson School here at city council. We had four groups of thirty. They came in and we did a mock city council. And they were phenomenal, they were awesome. We asked them the same question that we asked the group back in May from Garfield School. Would you like to extend your lunch recess? And we had, of course, the pro side, the con side, we had a seven-person city council. And, uh, Reyna took care of the city council folks, I took care of the kids that were against the issue. Those, and then the teacher took care of those who were for the issue. And we conducted our mock city council and it was split. Two classes opted to extend their recess because they wanted more bathroom, uh, time and more playtime and more exercise time. Uh, and then two classes, uh, opted to have, uh, to keep the recess as is because they felt that their learning time would be impacted otherwise. And so they all did phenomenally well and I think that the big takeaway from all of this is, first and foremost, that these children got a firsthand look at city council and how we do our business. And secondly, and, uh, equally important, I would say, is that so many of them walked out and said, I wanna be the mayor. I wanna be a city council person. I wanna have, I wanna make motions. And, uh, that's pretty spectacular, cuz if we can get them to want to be civic leaders now, we can hope that, uh, someday they'll replace us and sit right up here and, and so, I really enjoyed my interaction with them. And of course, police and fire will als- were also available, and the chamber. Chamber provided raisins, fire had their fire trucks out here with their hats. Police, I think you folks did a canine thing out at the park. And so it was really a, a very nice civic event, um, for the second graders at Jackson School. That was a big one.
Question, how do they determine which schools come each year?
You know, um, the teacher contact. So last year, I used to teach at Garfield and I'm still pretty good friends there and so they, and, and, just so that folks understand that are listening, this is part of the social studies curriculum for, uh, schools. So in kindergarten, it's my, my family, my home. First grade, it's community, second grade, it's local government. And i- it's concentric, so they build upon it. And by the time they get to sixth grade, they're studying ancient civilizations. And so they just build upon prior knowledge. And so that's part of their social studies curriculum to come out. Jackson School just called and asked if we would do that, same with, uh, Garfield School, all the teachers talk and so they must have. But it would be awesome if we could get all of the schools out here at some point during the school year.
We used to, years ago, we had Know Your City Day and we invited all the kids. And so that was their interaction with, um, civic government. And we had over nine hundred kids that would come into, or come to City Hall every year. And we did that in conjunction with the March fifteenth. Yeah, with our March fifteenth anniversary. So it was, it was a huge endeavor and it became such a huge endeavor that, um, when we started furloughs, that's when we stopped the process.
You know, it might be something that we may wanna take a look at again. Um, I, as, children aren't, these days are not the same children that we've had in the past. These children, at the touch of a button electronically, can be virtually transported anywhere around the world, our univer- verse. And they can see things that children, when we grew up, couldn't see. And so it's critically important that we, if we want to keep engaging them, that we provide these real-life opportunities for them. Because, eh, you know, classroom isn't in four walls anymore. It, you have to be able to go outside those four walls to truly educate our next future generation. And so I'm glad they were here and happy to help.
Thank you, Ben, uh, Franco?
Okay. I didn't do all that, I didn't do all that.
The League of Cities.
Okay, well, let's start off with that. Uh, I, me and Councilman, Member Dur attended the League of City Conference this past week. And it's clear to say that homelessness is the number one issue in the state of California right now. It's taken over as priority. And, um, I attended one of their classes on that and Mr. Dur contested, it was probably, the two classes they had on that were at capacity.
Yeah.
Um, uh, the, the league itself, uh, this year is endorsing, I can't say what they're endorsing the league is. Uh, Proposition One, the Veterans and Affordable Housing Bond. Proposition Two, No Place Like Home, once again to do with housing. And yes on three, uh, California Bond Act. And no on six, and Stop the Attack on Bridges and Roads, which is protecting SB one. Uh, some of the classes I attended were the benefits of thinking big, tackling the homeless problem, uh, attracting talent to your organizations, uh, getting the most out of your city's services, and, uh, the present and future of, of policing culture in your city. And probably one of the more interesting one was, um, the new economic development and land use. And I'm, I'm kinda sad Cliff is not here because what they were talking about was, if you wanna get economic develop- development going, you have to include not only the community, but the developer and city staff to get on the same long-term goal-setting page. And without long-term goal-setting and working that into your master plan, that you're putting yourself at a tremendous disadvantage. So I think that's what kinda we were all saying here. So, that was basically it over, for the league. You know, I did have a couple of interesting conversations while there cuz you meet a lot of different people from all over. And the first thing they ask you when you find out you're a fellow elected official is, are you up for reelection? Or are you campaigning? And so forth. And actually, several of the, the conversations always led to, are you districts yet or are you not districts yet? And they're coming. And they're saying, even if, even if you get sued, you gotta pay thirty to forty thousand dollars if it happens. I don't know, I think it's time that, is there a way that we can decide whether we wanna, one day go to it? Can we have a forum and insulate, or does that protect us from a lawsuit? What I heard, I was talking to a gentleman from, former member from Herman, and he says, Eve, they got sued and they said, that's fine, we will, we'll go to the district, but they still had to pay thirty thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Franco, yes, if someone files a lawsuit for districting, we are responsible for attorney's fees. Um, this can be brought back at a later date to the council if that's something the council desires to discuss.
Okay, I mean, it's just a discussion, I don't know if it's.
If we agendize the conversation, will it insulate us from the thirty thousand if someone should come to sue us? They can, or do we have that ability to say, we've already begun the discussion and therefore insulate the city fiscally?
Well, that's what we had to talk.
No, in the event that someone files suit, that we are responsible regardless if we've had a conversation about it or not.
What if we had it, what if, what if we, well, that's what we have, I want just a discussion. Can we fit that on the calendar, just a discussion about that?
If that's the direction of the council, we can do that.
Yes. I would go for it.
And then, um, S K F, have you updated on the call line?
They have postponed this month's meeting until the twenty-seventh because, uh, folks were at California League of Cities. So as far as an official update, I have not received that.
Okay.
But for sure, if I get, when I get that information, I'll forward that to city manager unless you already have information that I may not.
I don't, I actually reached out to Veronica S K F too and didn't get a reply back with that, so.
And then, as soon as I get that meeting, then I'll in, forward the information to him and then he can email all of you guys so we don't have a violation.
And, uh, that's it for me, thank you.
Mike?
I left most of you a note on your desk as to what I did while I was in California.
Here it is.
That's it right there, right?
That's it, right there.
Okay, great.
Anyway, um, most of, I was involved with some really interesting conversations with some folks. And had a really good time, uh, with Louis. Um, we did, uh, Hunt for the Future, we did general sessions. Um, the keynote, there was, the keynote au- author was excellent, but they only had one really good keynote speaker during the entire event, as far as we're concerned. Um, I hu- I did a hunt for the future and I saw a couple, uh, sessions on the homeless crisis. I'm not sure I completely understand our situation here in Selma. And I'm gonna have to do some work on that just to get, uh, ready to talk intelligently about it. Uh, but anyway, it was a good, a good event. Uh, I kept an eye on Louis, make sure he didn't drop over dead, so I had to vote for him.
Oh, my goodness, Louis, what's this about?
Which is the only reason I was there.
Okay, Louis.
We needed her, man.
Yeah. Okay, Scott?
Thanks.
Um, just, I, I've had a conversation with the attorney at Laughco about the districting and he was saying that the, there is a, a special district that just got districted down south, I think Colingo, the medical district, they call it, they had a hospital. And he said, get ready, i- it's coming, it's coming everywhere. And there's a lawyer that's specializing in suing cities now. And they'll take like eight grand to go away, but, you know, we, we have to do something before they get to us and they will get to us eventually. Um, so that's coming. Um, this Saturday, Rose and I, we cleaned the kennels at Second Chance, attended the, really well-attended car show at Lincoln Park, that was amazing. Attended, great turnout, attended the, um, pre-big Fresno Fair livestock judging contest at Selma High and attended the Relay for Life fundraiser organized by Jane Ono in Fresno, really nice home, got about a hundred and ten people, it was a great event. Um, that was, it was a great day, the weather really cooperated and was very nice. Um, Councilmember Dur, I understand my name came up at the, um, arts council meeting. There's some question as to whether I had purchased that statue at Rose and McCall, the big statue.
No, I wasn't there.
Mrs. Dur, okay, well, Mrs. Dur, uh, Jeanette brought up my name and said that I had donated it and there were some considerations on whether or not I wanted it moved. I have nothing to do with that statue, for the record, nothing to do, I didn't buy it, didn't donate it.
Ten years, man, right? We only have.
It's due back at that standpoint, but there is a discussion that maybe, maybe staying, that was kind of the conversation they were having. Well, it will come back, I mean, there, there's just preliminary conversations on, and about moving and things of that nature, so.
Go ahead.
But I could definitely talk about it, not having any kind of ownership interest in the statue, alright?
I see your name on the statue there, on the bottom.
Uh, uh, and I'm looking forward to the candidate forum that's coming up. I understand that's gonna be put on by the chamber, by the leadership class at the chamber.
Do we have a date for that?
Is that next week or two weeks?
October second, six-thirty here.
October si- it, it'll be at, and I'm, I'm assuming we'll have the, the. It can be streamed.
We'll have it here, so it can be streamed.
Okay, great, looking forward to a fair process, unbiased moderator, and all the questions get asked from the citizens this year. I think that'd be really important. Um, also attended the third and final farmer's market at High Street last Tuesday. Jesse Crowe, George Cruz, that's all, good job, you know, on having, uh, three of these. And it was really nice to have people come out from the community and get to visit with each other, um, buy things, buy corn, and, uh, load of potatoes and, uh, looking forward to next year's farmer's markets. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, man, I, I, myself, I, uh, I was a busy man myself. Uh, the Lieutenant Governor came to Fresno and they gave me a call, given an invitation to meet him, so I got to meet him. And he talked about what was going on, what's the future of California, what direction we're moving. And, and he did say that homeless is an issue in California and, uh, and housing, uh, affordable housing and, uh, and also sen- uh, senior housing as well. Um, and, uh, the idea, the, the conversation is, uh, the future of, of education for the kids come up. You know, cuz they're the future of our society. And, uh, he wants to, uh, you know, if he ever gets in, whoever, you know, whoever gets in, they wanna address the issue on education as far as, uh, their tuition and all that, and colleges, because, you know, they want kids to, uh, improve themselves in education in colleges and, uh, schools. And they wanna, he wants to improve the status of the kids in the fut- they're the future of our society. But, as I move on, that was said, and, uh, I also, um, attended the, uh, the farmer's market. Well, it's gotten bigger. And also, uh, at the car show, Bob, fantastic job, your people did a good job out there, thank you for bringing the people in our community. And also, uh, Mike, I attended your church, uh, event, they had a dinner, um, deal. Um, my wife been on six items and she got five out of the six. I had to go to the bank that next day. No, no, I'm only kidding. Uh, first time I made history with my wife. Uh, but, uh, but, uh, it, but it was a good event, it was well, well-deserved. Uh, the kids, the leadership of kids from the high school, uh, did the serving, uh, for the community, uh, event. And I liked to see that, and that was good. Uh, the high school kids took part of that in our community, I, I like what I saw in the, in the youth. And, uh, and I'm glad you guys, you guys sponsored the church, did a good job and do what you guys did. And the other issue too, uh, is in, uh, event, you know, next time when kids come to the city council, I, I wish you would've invited us to be part of it. As a team, you know, and, you know, I, I know, but you should've invited us as a group, say, hey, you know, it would've been better informed as a group, uh, more, as to the kids, hey, man, there's the mayor, there's the mayor, there's the council. And but, but that way it'd been more informal, it'd been more informal if it'd done, it was done that way, okay? But next time, please, you know, but that's okay, we can do it. But we could've did it as a group, you know? But that's next time. But, uh, overall, uh, we had, the city of Selma is moving forward. And thank you, Isaac, for your update on our community. Public Works, thank you Shane. Everybody in work in the city of Selma, thank you, fire department, uh, Mike, chief, everybody doing a good job. Uh, even the newspaper down there doing a great job, Laura as well. And the community, uh, e- everything's looking good. Thank you very much, and, uh, okay, now anybody can come forward, uh, oral communication, last, go ahead. Gabe, state your name and who you are, correct address?
Uh, my name is Angel Revolo, uh, two-three-seven-six Sierra View Street. Um, it's my first time coming, um, I wish I would've, uh, kind of knew that, uh, well, the oral communication, I guess, starts in the beginning, I wish I would've. As you can see, it's, yeah, so let me just.
That's okay, kid.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Let me just, well, I'm thirty-one years, I'm thirty years old, so I'm not, well, I guess I am a kid from your perspective, but I could, I could, well, that's the truth.
Hey, hey, you're catching up with me, don't worry.
I can't wait to get old, but I, I don't wanna talk to you guys about that, I'm a philosophy major, so don't even get me started on this stuff.
My grandma said you're old, you're, you're over twenty-five, you're old already.
Well, look at my hair, so, well, anyway, okay, but, um, okay, so I don't wanna take too much of your guys' time, but, um, okay, so greeting, uh, decision-makers of Selma. My name is Angel, I'm thirty years of age, born and raised in the raising capital of the world. I am here this evening to talk about our neighborhoods. I'd like to preface this by letting you folks know a little bit about what's been going on in the backyard of Selma. Namely, the intersection of Thompson and Dynuba. Lately, there's been some graffiti and some car break-ins. About two years ago, my brother visited one day for a couple of hours. And by the time he left, um, someone stole some things from his truck. Um, mainly materialistic stuff, um, nothing priceless, which is why I believe he did, he did not report it. My sister's house got broken into by a thief, or thieves, we don't know. Um, sometime last year in the middle of the afternoon, stealing her belongings, electronics, jewelry, house keys, and some car keys. Matter of fact, her Tahoe in the garage was loaded with other stuff, just waiting to be stolen from the thief or thieves. They did not take the vehicle, but they did take her feeling of sanity. Recently, uh, my next-door neighbor had her truck broken into, uh, one week ago, but, um, she did not report it. Luckily, the criminal only took a pair of sunglasses, nothing really expensive. About two weeks ago, our neighborhood got tagged up with graffiti with the letters VSR on, uh, neighborhood's brick wall. Several taggings, uh, with profanity on the cement. Keep in mind, we live, we live in a decent part of Selma, uh, not a bad one, not over there by, uh, the, uh, well, you don't know. Um, now, there have been some other instances, but I want to keep this brief, so I will refrain from those instances. Mr. Mayor and council, what can we do as a community to get these criminals off the streets? I am somewhat aware of building broken neighborhoods back to life and I have. I am somewhat aware of Building Broken Neighborhoods Back to Life, and I have read their mission statement, but I do not see anything specifically about a neighborhood watch. I could be wrong. I understand the police can't do everything, but it's, but it's possible that people can. How, you may ask? I suggest beginning by thinking for ourselves. We live in an age that people have spent, or we live in an age that people have smartphones, which does all the thinking for them. So, this seems to be the trend, and if that's the case, Mr. Mayor and Council, I suggest we wise up and make our neighborhoods smart. If we can do this, raise awareness through the city, or come to a better solution, Selma could be a more just city.
Thank you, thank you. But can I make a comment on that issue? A good, I'll give you a good example, I'll give you a good testimony. Eric White, Eric, had a problem in that area, and they, in, in certain areas, and they started a neighborhood watch program, and, and really, it's working in, in the area, that area, and areas that start neighborhood watch programs, it, it's working. I think if you're willing to step out and step to the plate in your neighborhood, talk to your neighbors about being a part of the neighborhood watch program. All right? And in contact with the chief here, 'cause he, they have people that are part of the neighborhood watch program, okay?
If I could just follow up with a comment, I don't, just take one. I think that's right, I would agree with that. But however, you know, I feel that, in particular, my neighborhood, and maybe even others, I cannot, you know, vouch for. I think folks are just fear, like, they have fear that they don't, I don't know what, why the motive, you know, they don't have no motivation to do anything. But I have actually suggested to talk to Sergeant Cantu about this, so I am heading in that direction, but I just wanted to address this.
It works. Please, try it.
I will.
And, and they gotta report it in, you know. I'm, you gotta tell them you have to report it in. When things happen, the graffiti, the, the break-ins, no matter how large or small they are, you have to report those in.
I totally agree with you. I tell, I suggest that to them, but I cannot, can I, can I choose for them that they make their decision?
Can you wait, can you wait after the meeting, Angel? 'Cause I wanna get your phone number, and I'm gonna have somebody call you from Neighborhood Watch.
That'd be great, alright.
Actually, you could talk to the chief too, before you leave.
Great, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Angel. Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Rose Robertson, ten fifty-seven Mills Street. I'm happy to hear that the forum's gonna be October second at six-thirty here, and it's gonna be streamed. That was gonna be one of my questions. My second question is, is that the Selma Healthcare District, the school board, and the city council, all candidates will be here for questions?
Yes, they will be talking at the Selma Chamber.
Very good, and we're gonna have it nonpartisan this year, correct? We don't need anybody in the city to monitor, moderate the, the questions. I had a very, we, four of us witnesses had, in the, in the audience, had a really bad experience with having our questions written down, and they should've been answered. And instead, they were, they were told, told to throw away, throw away those questions. So, this time, we'll be prepared. We will have our video, we'll have our iPhones, just like he said. And I'm actually not, I'm not afraid to start videotaping, because we need more nonpartisan here, and we need people's questions to be answered. We are the citizens, and we are the ones that pay a lot of this property tax, so it just needs to be nonpartisan. So, I look forward to, to this new forum that will be here on October second at six-thirty. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll make a motion to adjourn. Alright, motion to adjourn.